No.
No, we're not.
It will probably totally occlude my view, but I don't think that matters. Correct?
You get seventeen feet on one side, one foot on the other side. That's all you get.
Okay, I just wanted to have clarity on what was going on, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who opposed the public hearing portion of the meeting and asked for a motion?
I'll make the motion if you approve the area.
And show of hands on that. And roll call vote?
Andrew Hill.
Yes.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Patrick Duane.
Yes. And do the final variance. All right, Bethany, you're good to go, thank you.
Oh, thanks, Don, I appreciate it. Thanks so much for all your help.
Yeah, just come in, uh, give Donna probably two days to process it, come in, and we'll have you pay for it and take care of the rest of the details.
Yeah, I won't be here until next week because I'm still in quarantine until Sunday.
Even better, thank you.
Yeah, next week, thanks so much.
I, I don't know, but I don't have any paperwork on Dean Lashford.
Quality manufacturer?
Dean Lashford.
Tom is it, Tom?
Thomas Leclerc.
What do you want to be doing?
Yeah.
Annulated.
I didn't think he was coming. I don't have any paperwork in my package.
I will take somebody else's package and go make your quick copy. Thank you.
Not me either?
Uh, actually, yeah. I'll go through all the stuff. So, the appeal is number twenty-one eighty-nine, quality manufacturer homes on Archie Berto Road. They, this was tabled because Dean forgot about us last month. We were not important enough for Dean to grace us with his presence. So, they are back in front of us this month to request to be allowed to create a new mobile home park consisting of sixty new manufactured homes, which is not allowed in an industrial district. There is a lot of details of where this is, how it's expanding, where they would like to expand, where the existing, uh, mobile home park is going into there. Alan's got a bunch of the details that were submitted to us, uh, and also to the planning department that he can go over with. As Donna's getting the copies for Henry, uh, go over the details and we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, refresh your memory from the last time. We're talking about this large parcel right here that fronts on Irsell Road as well as Archie Berto Road. It's on, uh, west side, east side, excuse me, uh, the rail tracks. Mr. Leclerc, his current mobile home park is here. He granted a variance at, I think, three or four lots down here. He now wants to create a new mobile home park in this area. As you can see, both areas are zoned industrial, so he did get his variance for this one here because of the industrial. This one here is also industrial. We also mentioned that the zoning board, or zoning rewrite committee, has recommended these two parcels be changed to MH to match this parcel. So, this is all, because nothing in this area has actually been brought up as industrial use. But as it is right now, it is not MH. Here's a closer view of this area, basically unimproved. Now, there is a current trailer that's sitting right here. That's the trailer. This was the proposal. This is just a rough sketch proposal of what the max could possibly be. We know that this is gonna be, end up getting reduced once they start putting in roads and drainage ditches and utilities, that kind of stuff. But right now, it's set at sixty. They were here for their variance. They went through the secret process and noted that they had a concern, or we had a concern, about the historical significance of this area. We tabled at that time for them to go get more information. They submitted a letter back to you from the historical society saying that there is no historical significance for this area at this time. So, they are back to proceed.
Uh, I have a, a letter. I actually have to, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this was from the Clinton County. Gotta make sure I'm giving the dates correct, sorry. Uh, nine to twenty. So, this was, uh, two thirty-nine M referral to Archie Berto, use of variance for sixty manufactured housing units. Disapproval by the county planning board with comments. Town Plasberg ZVA applicant manufacturer home use of variance for sixty manufactured housing park within an industri- industrial zoning district Archie Berto Road. The Clinton County Planning Board, at its September third, twenty twenty meeting, voted six to one to disapprove of the request with the following justification forward to the town. The applicant does not meet the test for a use variance as submitted. The board also believes that the proposed is too dense for the development for the site, especially considering the need for an on- onsite septic system. Glenn Cutter.
All right, do we want to give the option, seeing that it's only important?
Yes, you need to.
Yeah, absolutely.
First, let's, first, let's explain why it went through the county. Previously, it didn't because the county canceled the meetings.
Right.
Since this project had been delayed so long, once the county started meeting again, we're obligated to send the project to them. So, they got the project because we got the letter from the historical side, which was additional information, so we had to send it back to them. They actually had met, had a chance to actually vote on this, that's why it is. But I don't believe the applicant was informed that there's only going to be four members, so therefore you need to offer your option to them.
See, there's only four members tonight, we have to have five, we have all four members vote yes. So, you might, give you the option to say, either you want to continue tonight, or you can say table till next month, only have five members hopefully.
I think what I'm going to do is, yes, add sort of the table. Initially, what was generated for a plan, uh, was based upon a, a plaque. Not considering other factors that are out there that might obviously reduce this number. I think it would be important to, uh, to, to show that, uh, what areas are going to be, um, removed as part of a lot. And actually, uh, we have looked at, um, increasing the lot size in way. This is the reason, I mean, when we submitted to, you know, the last meeting that we were asked, um, you know, as far as Sukafar, there was a question there, you know, is this within, uh, partially or wholly within an archaeological center area? And unless you, uh, do some research to check the site, their website, and/or, uh, to use the online, uh, completion, of course, Sukafar, they'll think that, well, that there's not. This area, uh, is not in part because this was a same heavily, uh, mounted sand layer. That material was removed as part of, uh, the estate. Uh, it was a sandhill. So, you know, there are suitable, uh, soil conditions here. And I think that with that, along with, that's something which I, you know, feel across as part of the, um, research for the archaeological survey. And it, um, I think we're to fall back and look at increasing these lot sizes. And then, um, for the next deadline, which is going to be next Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
And, um.
So, you want to go on, if you can have all that stuff?
I'm questionable, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I'm sure you have nothing else going on.
Uh, I, I think that the submission would be the following.
Okay.
Forward.
Can you just let us know, so then we can then say the board whether it's gonna be on or off? And then, obviously, uh, it'll have to be, uh, put back out the paper with new submissions. And I would highly suggest, if you have a new one, to s- to request to then resubmit it back down to the county. To Glenn Cutter, to say, hey, this is new information, to see if they would accept the new information based on any new information from, uh, soils, size.
Correct, is that, I don't, I don't even look at, consider as part of the review. But, I mean, if you look at the town of Plasberg, uh, may have your, may have your home requirements, five thousand square feet is their minimum lot size.
You are correct.
And, and I think that, um, we look at what it was. But, um, but I would say as we reduce the, the lot number, uh, you know, it, 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 just as in a residential subdivision, group subdivision, you know, it's, it's those lots that, um, you know, are part of the development for the neighborhood. So, but yes, I, I do, would request the table of board table this application, please. Reminds and provides some additional information to the board and to the town of Plasberg.
And seeing that this is going to be tabled for all you people that were here, and looks like the information is going to be changed that we would be dealing with. If somebody wants to make a comment quick tonight, we can let you do that, or it's gonna be tabled probably for a couple of months.
Tabled for a couple of months, we'll be back.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so the motion would be to allow.
Second.
And show of hands, and roll call vote.
Andrew Hill.
Yes.
Chairman Rebe.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Patrick Duane.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Uh, the next one's gonna be. William Gerard. Come on up front and center. Uh, William Gerard is on Two Bell Road. He's asking for an area variance, uh, request to be allowed to install eleven by twenty-six storage shed in his front yard, which does not meet the fifty-foot front yard setback, uh, with an accessory structure in R two district. He encroaches twenty-seven feet, uh, leaving twenty-three from the front property land. He has two front yards, but Alan has all the overheads and the layouts to show you where and how Mr. Gerard is looking to place this.
Mr. Chairman, this is Wallace, Wallace Hill Road here. This is Bell Road, this is K and M Circle. So, the lot we're looking at is this corner lot right here. So, you can see it's all zoned R two. This is a pre-existing, non-conforming structure on the lot. It doesn't meet the setbacks currently. As you can see, this is the Bell Road, this is Wallace Hill Road. This is the lot layout, house sits here. So, this lot line here, if you notice this, it's a little bit wider than our normal fifty-foot wide setback. Not sure why, but it is, which is also hampering his, uh, setback for this. So, there is a, he's looking to put it right in this area here. This may have been a pre, pre-existing shed, but it was under the ninety-six square foot, so it did require a permit. So, the last owner had this here. It's now been removed. Here's what it looks like today. So, this is now all been asphalted. This area right here is where he's looking to fit the shed. This is also asphalted. He has a, uh, plastic, kind of like a lifetime, uh, shed, kind of goes together in about three, four hours, that he would like to put right here, so he has some storage. This is the pride, so this is the driveway here. It is asphalt all the way back to here, around like this. This is where he's looking to put that.
So, what, what is the actual number that's sort of scribbled up there?
This one right here?
Yes.
That's twenty-five.
That's twenty-five feet? So, he's looking for a twenty-five foot variance.
Correct.
All right, and your problem is basically the house is not performing, it's also, you have two front yards. You have no, technically, no backyard.
Well, I put a thirty by thirty asphalt in.
Yeah.
And they took the fill, and they pushed it back because it's on the hill. And on the right of the house is my septic, septic system. And I told them, why don't you just go ahead and put a little slab in as well, since you have a lot of fill? And I'll just put like a shed on top of, actually, the shed that was in that picture is no longer there.
Right.
And actually, the, it was pushed back even further. So, it's, I mean, it's pretty close to the center of the yard. I mean, it's close to the end. But it's, it's on a hill and septic's on the side. It's really.
I'll open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody here like to speak to this matter? And seeing nobody raise their hand, we will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. And go over the area variance need for this, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible for the applicant. And the need for storage of tools, equipment for outside is what you need. And you basically really don't have any backyard. Undesirable change in the neighborhood character or to nearby properties. And basically, to me, it looks like a garage going onto the property. Whether the request is substantial, it might be considered substantial because it's more than fifty percent, but he, he doesn't have much option to this. He can't go back much further from their own opinion.
No, it's, it's all hill.
And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects. And don't see to that. And it was not self-created, so. Anybody have any questions, comments that they would like to make?
Could it be, you know, I'm not necessarily proposing this, but could it be pushed into that, further into that corner?
Into back there?
Yeah.
Um, it also kind of slopes that way as well, and it's super sloppy. Wallace Hill is very, very, very wet. But if I even, even if I was to push it further back, it'd be closer to the neighborhood, the neighbor lives right there behind that house. And, you know, I don't know if that would cause the inflammation for him, or if it's going to be even worse, but I don't know.
And you already have a slab there.
I, I have a slab, I sell some hopes, you know? I mean, I, I purchased one heritage heights there, I shouldn't install it, and I found this issue, you know?
So, the, the motion would be for a twenty-five foot variance to, to allow him to have, uh, a storage shed for outdoor equipment and tools, within that section.
Some more, keep it later for change.
I'll make that motion.
And then, second?
Second.
Show of hands, and a roll call vote?
Andrew Hill.
Yes.
Chairman Rebe.
Yes.
Patrick Duane.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir, just wait about two days, come in and see Donna. If you have COVID, stay away. If you're not, just come in, see the process after that.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Last but not least, is Mr. Chris LaFave, uh, in AEDA, and, uh, with Mr. Odella representing. Uh, Chris is asking for, Mr. LaFave's asking for a request to be allowed to construct three thirty by one seventy self-storage buildings containing forty-two units, which is now to allow in a neighborhood commercial zone. Alan's got the details that were submitted to us through AEDA. They can kind of show the whereabouts, what they're looking at doing.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is three seventy-four. This is the military turf pipe. This is Wallace Hill Road. We're just talking about the house right up here. Or actually, right over here. We're looking at this large parcel land right here. It's got a split zoning on it. So, we're looking at, actually, the front part here is going to be zoned neighborhood commercial. There's that split zoning, this is the same parcel. This is all agricultural out here right now. This is a vacant lot. This is a neighborhood commercial area. He's looking to put it in this area right here. There are some wet areas. There's actually a drainage channel that runs right down through here. That's why this is showing us some wetlands areas, but he's not doing any work in that area. So, basically, you can see that the road kind of trail that goes around, this is all planted with some of his nursery stock, as well as corn, or whatever goes out here. He's looking to put it on this side of that, that neighborhood commercial line kind of runs that down through here anywhere. So, he's over here on this side. Here's what it looks like today. So, you're standing at the gate, looking in, three seventy fours on this tree line over here. We're looking right down this area here for those three units to go in. This is Gerard's proposal, so you can see that neighborhood commercial line cut right down through here. This is all neighborhood commercial. That's the, uh, nursery stock I said. This is the, the rest of the agricultural area. And this would be the layout of those units. Mr. Bill, all yours.
Okay, thank you, Alan and Steve. Okay, my name is Chairman Bella, I'm with AEDA. I represent the application, and you are the owners, of course, of the area as well. As stated, we're looking at, uh, three storage unit in a building located on the corner of two seventy-four and Wallace Hill Road. We're in a neighborhood commercial zone, which, I mean, does not have self-storage buildings for their use. We have submitted, uh, we believe, a complete application with a detailed response to all of the four questions for use variance. I think I'll address just a couple of points rather than go through what the board may go through here in minutes and answer the actual questions. Couple of points, uh, we have, uh, submitted this plan to the town planning board. It's bound to the state plan, which is a different, that's a positive approval state plan. This has been bound to the county planning board as well. We believe it would be a local issue.
Uh, it was with comments, so, like, I'll, I'll let you go, then we'll read that, and then we all get up.
Okay. So, once again, a little bit different from the first application you've been hearing here tonight. This is in a neighborhood commercial zone. There are a number of uses that we believe are much more intrusive than self-storage. For instance, a restaurant, or a neighborhood, uh, convenience store with gas sales, uh, which we believe, uh, can be used to, for, 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 for the character of the neighborhood. In addition, uh, our storage building proposal does propose to have a more controlled site. And has, uh, proposing to have hours of operation as well as gated control on-site. Which is a little different than, uh, this prior application. Storage building will allow, uh, intel analysis, will allow for continuing back agricultural use on this property, which one is taking through the local property. Otherwise, it's going to be difficult to continue, uh, giving that out. I'll be honest, in our review of the outlined uses, it is very interesting if you look at the different zones. Neighborhood commercial zone allows for commercial development, which by definition, I don't know if it's going to include something like self-storage, which we would not identify other than one you to, uh, you know, the commercial or the service center zone for self-storage is named, but not defined underneath the ordinance. So, I find that interesting, you know, if I look at commercial development, uh, by definition, um, commercial development allows any land, building, complex, or structure or business with one or more business units adjoining or on the same lot, commercial development. So, I, once again, when I look at comparison, impact of use, self-storage, uh, seems, appears to be much less intrusive within the neighborhood commercial zone than other uses that could be proposed under commercial development. I also would like to point out that it appears, uh, that underneath the, um, town, one of the town's other neighborhood commercial districts, that you have either block, either by variance, which I have researched, or by some, uh, other reason, you have self-storage in a neighborhood commercial zone, the Plasberg self-storage appears to be in a, in a neighborhood commercial, uh, zone. But it's just another comparison of potential that the town recognized that this is, um, supported, or could be supported in the neighborhood. If that, uh, but you have another comment?
Uh, so it did, uh, as Mr. Odella stated, it did go to the county for two thirty-nine M referral, local issue with comments. Uh, so, the Clinton County Planning Board at its referral response, referral fifty twenty-two, Town Plasberg ZVA applicant, Chris LaFave, use variance for self-storage commercial units, Wallace Hill. The Clinton County Planning Board at its October seventh, twenty twenty meeting, voted eight oh to consider this request a local issue, but to provide the following comments to the town. The applicant, as submitted, does not appear to meet the test for a use variance. Glenn Cutter.
Funny how they never say why they don't actually think that meets the criteria. So, to go over some of the financial information that you have supplied for us, with the, basically, you're looking at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of building cost. That's actually, that's why you're talking about the cap, total capital investment.
Correct.
And on the second page of that, you have listings for some of the other uses as far as the residential use, as far as the development cost of a hundred and eighty dollars per square foot.
Correct.
Some other commercial, right now, commercial development, da, da, da. How many square feet are you actually?
So, we're looking at three buildings, uh, thirty feet by a hundred and seventy feet, which is probably fifty, one hundred square feet per room.
I'm serious, though, you're looking at her.
And the owner is looking to?
A thousand square feet. Can you put that into the relationship as far as if you're going to put a residential or multi-family house there? At a hundred and eighty dollars per square foot?
I think the, where we compare it is what the, is the development cost versus the market value. And, and the ability to assist with the support of the agricultural use.
I mean, not that it's a primed residential type area to, to look at necessarily, but I think it's just something that we need to, to look at to say that if you're gonna, if you have two hundred and sixty thousand that you're gonna put into it, you know, what type of multi-family building would you put there? And get a rate of return of? Um, what variables you should look at before you put the building on there is the construction of water lines, power lines. Well, hopefully, that was in the development cost of a hundred and eighty per square foot. Well, that all depends what you got for, how many houses you're trying to put in here. Probably, you get off the road and run past the business. Oh, definitely.
I was, I was gonna say, truthfully, that, that adds in a whole extra cost in terms of residential development, it's getting to residential, a hundred and eighty dollars per square foot. Typically, it would be just to build a home.
Uh, just to build your home.
And the box and site around it.
Right.
If you're looking at the overall development for the road, water, sewer, electric, that's, that's all.
In the past, I looked at another project, I got some prices from other contractors, so the road, per town specs, three hundred to four hundred dollars, nine feet. They're looking at going probably four hundred feet, so I say good morning. And you're actually, you're still gonna have access to your back lots through this area?
Yes, I, yes. And now I have farm roads that are constructed, to my, to the tree farm. And there is a road that goes parallel, as you can see, it's kind of dotted there, like that. This is a farm road.
Board members have any more questions, concerns they'd like to address?
Uh, open up the public hearing.
I would like to, do one other thing.
Sure.
I did do a lot of thought process on going through use variance, but there's gonna be a quick poll.
Excuse me, could you speak up, please?
I did go through a lot of thought process before I decided to make this decision to go storage units. And one of them was the impact of the, the area. I'm very fond of the land, but I need to make a living also. So, I just chose this avenue due to the fact that it's, in my eyes, less impact, restricted the use of it. So, I mean, I'm trying to get people in and out of there at six o'clock in the morning and being done by eight, nine o'clock at night. The fact that I have vested interest to keep the neighborhood happy and keep my property safe, along with the people that I'm renting these units to. So, that was taken into consideration long before I brought this to AEDA. Thank you.
We'll open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody that would like to speak to this matter, just walk up to the microphone, state your name, and you can offer your viewpoint.
Good evening, I'm Gilas Hevers. I own a property northwest of his property. I've got sixty-one acres over there. Northwest corner. And my question- And my question is, by making this a commercial, a residential, commercial property, is that going to include all the property or just down where he's proposing to put the buildings?
Just where he is putting the buildings, the rest of it stays as agricultural.
There's no zoning change, Gillis. It's just, uh, he's asking for development in a neighborhood commercial. It's not asking for a zoning change to go from agricultural residential, it's staying the same. As Alan put up, you have the one which shows the zoning split down the middle of the property? So if you can see that, it, it, so it's kind of hard to see, but it's two parcels. But the middle that, uh, as he's doing is one's neighborhood commercial and the others are too. So they're not asking for a zoning change.
Okay, and that's not going to change in the future? I mean, once the buildings are there, they're not gonna come back and say, uh, we don't wanna make the rest of this, uh, presi- uh, neighborhood commercial?
That would be for the applicant, not for, I, I don't know.
He would have to come back. If he's grant, if he's granted any expansion, bring him back.
I don't have any desire to do any more than that.
No, I know what the, if you sold it to somebody or whatever, you know, then the, that's a whole new bargain. I mean, I'm not the guy anything against it, don't get me wrong, I just need to know.
I've invested in the tree farm there, I plan on being there for a while.
That's good, that's good.
Okay, all right, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, I'm Jessica Provost, I live at five ninety-nine Wall Hill Road, directly across from where this is, or where he wants to put this. Um, I bought my house a few years ago, it was my grandmother's home. I bought it for that reason, but many other reasons too. One is that she loved her home, and when I look at it, I still see what she saw. That means the surrounding neighborhood. I also bought it because it's private. I'm at the end of the road, I don't have neighbors other than my relatives. I bought it because, um, it has a beautiful view, in my opinion, and because of the wildlife that runs through it. I'm, my concern is that, one, I will no longer have the privacy I once had it, once had. I won't have the beautiful view I once had. I will no longer have the wildlife that I once had coming through. And I also knowingly bought my home with some disadvantages to it. A lot of people, because it's the, I'm assuming because it's the end of the road, and they think no one's looking, they throw their trash right in that spot. I pick garbage off of my front lawn weekly. They also park their cars right in that area so that they can text or talk on their phone or whatever, which is fine, but a little unnerving when you live alone. Can you guarantee me that I won't have more trash to pick up? Can you guarantee me that I won't have more people loitering around my home? Will you guarantee me that the value of my home won't decrease because of this? What's happening right across the street? And you may have said earlier, you think it's an unfavorable area to have a residential home. I, I take offense and I disagree. My home is right across the street, directly across the street. And I'm doing what I can to make it lovely, it's not valued that much, but I, I love the area.
Is your house, the actual one that's?
Right there.
Right there?
Yes.
Okay.
And that entrance way is diagonal to my driveway. So there, there is not much, it looks like a lot, but there really is not much in the way of.
So just, just so you're clear, everybody else is here, on what, what's on the table right now. The large parcel here that's on initial fame has got two zoning classifications on it. The, the part closer to three seventy-four closest to your residence is own neighborhood commercial. He could put up a gas station there tomorrow without coming to this board, because that's an allowed use. To me, that would create a lot more noise, trash, light, traffic than what he's proposing.
Yeah.
So there are many uses, what, what he was trying to explain, I think, is there's many uses within neighborhood commercials that he could do without a variance, but he viewed those as too intrusive to the existing neighborhood to do any of those. So yeah, I think what he's trying to say is I'm picking a use for this property that while I need a variance, is significantly less intrusive, at least in his eyes, to the other things he could do without a variance. So just, I, I completely get what you're saying about noise and those kind of things, but again, he could, if he decides he wants to put up two Stewart shops right there with gas pumps and the lighting and twenty-four seven operation and dumpsters, people, you know, he could do it without coming to this board, and there's nothing anybody can do about that. He has the right based on how that's owned to do it.
Okay.
So just, just so everybody's aware, what, what it's zoned for now, what that would allow, to me, is significantly more intrusive than what he's asking for. Whether or not that changes your comments, I'm not trying to dissuade you, but just, I think you've got a developer who's saying, hey, I could do A, B, C, and D. To me, in my eyes, those would make your life as residents worse. I'm choosing something that I have to come get permission to do, but I'm doing it because I think I can make money here and not intrude on your lives any more than I would need to, any more than a Stewart's or a McDonald's or Maplefield's, which he can do like that if you want to. Just to give you guys that information, I just, I, I think that's what they were trying to get across before. I think more understanding, because I've seen that, you know, they've seen that a hundred times. But that's, that's how the zoning, when a parcel is zoned, two different things, it's kind of weird how that could work out, that's kind of what we're talking about here.
Well, I was given a letter stating that I had the right to come here and speak my opinion. And without doing so, it would be seen that I didn't object. And I wanted to make it clear that I do object.
Yep, that, that, I just want to make sure you were clear as to what, what's happening, what the other potential, because say this gets denied, and the property gets sold to somebody else with his own neighborhood commercial, somebody else could go up there that you may not be able to speak about, so.
I suppose.
Just, I, I guess, just so you know, I get to your thoughts.
I do want to say that I'm not removing any trees, I'm trying to make this, these, everybody's around me. I didn't realize how the impact at all prior to this. You guys keep a seat, there's not a lot of activity going on there, and I don't want to continue. If there's people parking in there, we're gonna eliminate that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to inform Mr. Lefebvre that he talks to the board.
Sorry, sorry.
You know, your board, you too, whatever your concerns may be, and anybody else that's here. The board, if it's gonna make an approval, condition approval on certain things, such as more trees between your property and this, they, they, so your, your concerns can also, if the board's gonna prove it, help to alleviate some of those concerns by doing different things, like screening, fencing, trees, uh, limiting the hours that this could be in operation, certain types of lighting, so it's good that you're here to tell the board what your concerns are, because if a project's gonna go forward, hopefully, or many of your concerns in hope would be alleviated based on what you're telling the board tonight. So keep going with, with whatever those concerns are, because they could work with you on that.
Well, I, like I said, I live alone. And you mentioned before the hours of operation between what you're proposing is six AM and eight PM. I will point out to you that in the wintertime, it's dark during those two times. That's when I'm leaving for work, and that's when I'm already come home from work. It is dark. And I don't have this property anymore. There used to be a barn that was a part of the property that I live in. Um, it was sold to my uncle, that barn, which was burned down by an arsonist. So, I mean, you can understand my concern of having strangers or people around. I have certain hours at night when I'd rather there not be, and there haven't been.
Right. And all we're trying to say is that.
And that's why I bought my home.
He has the, the ability to put up, like the attorney said, Matt said, a Stewart's there, some other type of convenience store, restaurants that could run twenty-four hours a day without coming to see us at all. He has the right to do that with the way it is owned right now.
I would like to offer something. Review of my property was increased two years ago when they had some telephone issues. They took a lot of trees down. I don't know if you realize that, that was not even part of my, that's right away through the telephone. If it's an issue, you don't want to see something, we can accommodate you with that. Because that is a right away issue that they have to get in there and do something. Well, they put a new culvert in for the road.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else here would like to speak?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Gregor, I live at forty-seven Rascal Road. Not gonna take up much more of your time. Um, the idea of storage units is unappealing to me. One year ago this month, October two thousand and nineteen, on a quiet dead-end road, my camper was burglarized, items stolen from there. Storage units hold home goods and valuables, which to me encourages more people to come to this area to gain access to things they can take and then sell. The idea of the storage units being secure does not appease my worries. Um, somebody could easily rent a storage unit to gain access to that area and then burglarize the storage units there. It brings more people into this area that do not need to be there.
Thank you.
My name is Pramila Provost, I live at five five-two Wallace Hill Road. What I'm saying, wanting to say comes from my heart. I am sixty-seven years old, I have lived on the Wallace Hill Road for sixty years. I was born, when I was born, to this family, which now Jessica owns my mother's house. I lived there until I married at nineteen. My husband and I moved into the city for seven years. We returned to build a house just beyond here, over here, in nineteen seventy-nine. We still live there. This, these storage units, this building, this building, there is not a single building on this entire Wallace Hill Road, or the Rascal Road, or the Bell Road, or Vintage Estates, that is a hundred and seventy feet long. I understand that you're trying to do your best. My question is, how this got to be zoned from agricultural to commercial? When, I didn't know about it, I just found out tonight that this was a zone commercial. When I saw these trees going in, I was delighted. When I saw the flag go up, I was delighted. I said, what a wonderful use for this land. But those are not a wonderful use to this land. If this board allows another thing to happen on the Wallace Hill Road, which it did, a three thousand chicken farm turned into a forty-two thousand chicken farm, which now, we don't know what's going to happen. We are living in a nightmare in waiting. You set up laws to control this kind of thing. I want to tell you this one thing, when I was twelve years old, they started clearing the land through for three seventy-four. And I could stand there, because I used to walk those woods, and look down and see the path going down into the city, and look up the road and see the path that way. My uncle owned the property across from here. And you have a previous map, and whoever can control this, switch it to the previous map. I want to show you one thing. Who's that this being?
Uh, not that one, this one?
Right here, you see this right of way? When I, when my uncle had his land taken for right of way, he had to move his house and moved up the road here. Right here, all of this is, the county took. The reason he was told that the county was taking this is so that a, a gas station, um, a business could not build here on this corner that was remade. So this land became landlocked, because they took right of way. The only reason that this was left was so Mr. Hayes could continue his dairy farm and get his cows, I used to help him go down and get those cows in the morning. What the county deemed those many years ago, that they did not want businesses on those corners, because it was a very dangerous intersection, and they prevented my uncle from selling his land, which became landlocked, you now have a lot of heaven. Back in nineteen eighty-three, Mr. Hayes, the former owner of this farm, right here, and these lands, had petition. His wife wanted to run a twenty-four hour, not twenty-four hour, seven day a week garage sale, selling stuff in antique's offer port. But Mr. Hayes, who had stopped farming by then, wanted to build an auction barn on that parcel of land. And he petitioned this town for a variance, first to just get the variance to come in so that they could have their little sale seven days a week off their port. It was a way to move it into the next phase. I loved Mr. Hayes. I took care, I, I went and helped him with the cows. It broke my heart to stand up and say, but Mr. Hayes, what you do today will affect this area for the rest of its days. Just like a, a chicken farm for forty-two thousand chickens on agricultural land that is not agricultural land, when you change the usage. These were all subsistent farmers from one section to the next, all the way down to the Wallace Hill Road. And I could tell you who they were, because my grandfather was one of them. When you change the usage, it changes forever, and you can't take it back. I know you need to make money, but you knew that, you knew that beforehand. You, everyone here must know who bought this farm, aren't the same. As I said, it's a dangerous intersection. My sister had two accidents at that intersection, and one nearly killed her when she was struck by a semi truck. I speak from my heart, my heart is here. I know, Mr. Lefebvre, that you loved that building. When I saw the trees going up and the flag coming in. But you have to think of every single resident. My greatest, my greatest sorrow is that it was turned into commercial. It cannot be changed back. And yes, now the county so many years ago said should never go in there has happened. Thank you.
Thank you to you. Somebody else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Joel Deso, I live five sixty-nine Wall Hill Road. Um, that was my aunt that just spoke. My whole family's lived there our entire lives, uh, from obviously me, my father, my grandparents, my great-grandparents. And, uh, well, the barn that was burned down was on my father's property. And I got called from work and I had to come into that. My concern is, will this bring more criminal elements? I believe it may. I had to chase this guy down in the middle of the night that broke my, my property down, everything we owned. It wasn't just my property, it was my aunt's property, my cousin's property. Yep, that's an awful big pill to swallow. You know, and that was one person. Now generally, storage units, well, are used for good intentions, sometimes bring a criminal element on them. Uh, people break into them, they steal things, they go down there, while they understand the intention is to keep it for certain usage at certain times, can we maintain that? My biggest problem is, is, well, if people are going down there using it for criminal uses, we have drugs, it's a residential area, we have children all over the place. Or if, you know, they start breaking into these things, I've already had to deal with this once. I don't want to deal with it again. You know, my family was hurt hard by, by what happened. And just like everybody else's families that live on Wall Hill Road, if something does happen again, similar nature, it's gonna be the same thing. And I understand that we can use this for Stewart shops or whatever else. I, I, I understand that, but it's not about this right now. And I, I have main issue with it, with the criminal element, the changing of the land. I try not to do anything on my property that is gonna devalue somebody else's property. You know, I maintain my land, I maintain my property, just like my aunts, my uncles, my cousins, everybody else that lives there, because we all have to enjoy it. We all have to get up in the morning, and we share that property. And it's not just our property, everybody lives on, the rest. And it's not just our property, it's where I live on, the Rascal Road, the Bell Road, everything down there. We all have to work together to make this an enjoyable area, there's no other property on that is commercial. Other than maybe the Thunderbird Mart at the end of the road, that hasn't been used in years, because that's the only other thing I can think of. And that's now at the other end of the road, that's before my time. That is my main concern. That's, that's pretty much all I have to say about it.
Yes?
Good evening, my name is Charlene Nickerson. I live at forty-one Rascal Road, we've been there about fifteen years, we moved out from the city of Plattsburgh to that area, we loved it. It looked, it was like being in the country, but yet only five minutes from town. And, uh, we built a new home there, we enjoyed the wildlife, just today I had two deer walking along the tree line in the back of my property, and lots of wild turkeys. And when we bought the property from Mr. Art Lefebvre, we were told that the back of that property was wetlands and farmlands, and that there would never be any building back there, there might be cows someday, or corn, but there wouldn't be any commercial property, and then um, I understand that we, his grandson bought half of that property, and we were again assured this was farmlands and wetlands, and not for commercial or business use, and, uh, we think that his tree lawn is great. We love it, and whatever, I think there might still be some corn back there. But, uh, I think putting, uh, storage units, three units, forty-two units each, a total of a hundred and twenty-six units in there, will create a dangerous, uh, situation on three seventy-four in the intersection of the Wallace Hill Road. Three seventy-four is very busy, the cars are supposed to be going fifty-five miles an hour through there, they're going sixty-five and seventy. And then, you know, to turn off onto the Wallace Hill Road, especially at night when it's dark, and in another few weeks if we turn the clock back, it's dark by four thirty-five o'clock. And then it's a quick turn, once you get on Wallace Hill, it's a quick turn onto Chris Lefebvre's property where he wants to put the storage units. And I think that will be a lot of congestion, there was just a bad accident there, two or three weeks ago I saw that accident there. And there's too much traffic moving at a high speed. And, um, there's no light, street light at that intersection, and it's dark. And, uh, I agree with people who say, you know, there was just, I heard recently a situation in town Skylar Falls where they have a storage unit, no lights, no cameras, nothing. A lady moved her stuff in, and a week later it was broken into and gone. You know, people know, people put stuff in storage units, and if you're looking for things to steal, they're gonna go in there, whether you have a gate or not, it's easy to hop a gate and get into that area. Um, and also, I don't, I think it will set a precedent. If you allow the storage units, then what's next? Uh, big commercial garages for commercial equipment? Uh, office space or housing?
You can do that right now without even coming here.
And, uh, also, I, I really don't see the need for it, because I counted up five or six storage units area within one point six to three point eight miles of that property. There are storage units all over the place. So I don't see a need for it. And, um, I, I'm not in favor of that. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak?
Hello, I'm to Char Desau, I'm Joel's wife, I live on 569 Wallace Hill Road. I do have a question for State How I Feel. Um, if it's already zoned for that, why do we have to be told about the storage units going on that?
Because it's not, because storage units are not allowed in neighborhood commercial, which is how this is zoned. So he's asking for a variance to say, "I want to use this land for something that's already currently allowed." What the applicant has said is, the things that are currently allowed, in their view, would be much more intrusive to your neighborhood, such as...
Oh no, I get that, but I just didn't know why, you know, we have a meeting about...
I'm allowed to do A, B, C, and D, I want to do X. Therefore, homeowners around that area have to be told and have the right permission to do exactly what you're doing. So that's why you've been told this.
Okay, I was just curious about that, because I figured that was commercial. Um, we built our house up in this area, now eight years ago. My husband's always lived on this land, that's why we decided to live up. It is a beautiful area. Um, I know that it was said that there was other properties around our stores and such as that, but when you actually come across three seventy-four, it's like a different world. It is the country, it is beautiful, there are animals everywhere. I can go out my back door and see a deer, and stand next to a deer twenty yards away from me, without them moving. When you start bringing in all this other business, it's gonna stop the animals from feeling so comfortable, and having the land room out there. And that is one of the things I love most about our property. My other concern is, that road, even though it seems like a country area, that road is busy on the end, even Wallace Hill Road. When I have to leave for work in the morning, if I don't leave twenty minutes earlier on a weekday, I won't get to work that time, because you can't even get off Wallace Hill Road onto three seventy-four, because of the traffic. So if we put all these units in, that's a hundred and twenty-six people that need to have access to that area. And right now, even if somebody is doing any work down in that area, even on that property or on the corner, it is almost impossible to get off that road, because of how narrow it is. So now we can have all these other people having access and coming in, and there is a criminal unit element to all that. And as my husband said, you know, we had our barn burned down, the family barn, by people that just happened to find it up there. So what happens when all these people are coming in and out there and see all the homes and barns and garages and everything else that possibly they could break into? Because it is a very nice residential area. The houses are all very nice, middle-class houses, and I just, I honestly think if this comes in, we're gonna be inviting an element into that area that was the reason why we built our homes up there, is to not deal with this. That's the reason why we pay a little bit more taxes to live in this area, because we care about what's out there, or what we see, and what we are involved in. And that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me just submit this letter.
Sure.
Basically, what I had intended to say, that's, thank you.
Anybody else? Or is that all?
I have a quick question, uh, I'll just add on to it. Now, let's say there is a a Stewart's is put in, or the commercial part of it, and that was a big thing, he doesn't have to ask us for storage, you know, he doesn't have to ask us for he has to ask for storage units, but not gas station or restaurant or anything else. Where would the road for that have to be? Would it be off of Wallace Hill, or would it be on three seventy-four?
Off of Wallace Hill.
So it would be off of Wallace Hill.
Same exact answer.
Be off of Wallace Hill.
Okay.
The actual list of items that he could put in there without any question goes from any type of agricultural use in home, child, daycare, recreation trails, single-family dwellings, two-family dwelling unit, to agricultural structure, a business or professional office building, cemetery, a clinic, any type of commercial development, commercial greenhouse, commercial recreation facility, community center, condominiums, educational institution, financial golf course, a hospital, multi-family dwellings, neighborhoods, convenience store, uh, a church, any type of public building, public recreation facility, a restaurant, or townhouses, and even, there's a few more after that even.
Can I just say, did I add one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
It's nice to find out that about what a commercial property is after it's been turned, converted into a commercial section. Would have been nice if we had known that before, there would have been more opposition.
It happened in two thousand twelve, and there was a public hearing for it.
I, I was not aware. I was not aware, I did not get a variance notice.
It's publicized, so you don't, it's a town board.
The town changed the zoning for that area, and to do that, they had to go public hearing, it has to be noticed in the newspaper, so anybody that gets the newspaper is aware.
And if mine...
So you would not have been mailed something directly to your house because of that, because that's not what the law requires.
So it was in the newspaper, so I would have had to purchase a newspaper in order to get that notice. Okay. Thank you. And of all those options, there are two good ones there that are in storage units, without being a full-out commercial product. Thank you.
All right, and we will now close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and move on to the, the use variance. Do we have to, is secret?
You bet you do. I'll be more than happy to go over this project. Okay, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Notice small, moderate, to large. Your back.
Mr. Baggel, real quick, before we can I make one note in terms of the Part One description?
Sure.
Underneath the Part One description, construction through storage in buildings thirty by one seventy, it should say with, with thirty, ten by fifteen units?
Okay, I'll change it on here.
Okay, and that is, that would be consistent with the application.
Okay, so the proposal is for thirty, ten by fifteen units, and twelve by by ten units, just so the board is clear, so I'll read the question again. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Know or small impact, moderate or large impact?
I would go along with the small impact, seeing that some of the industrial development, the commercial greenhouse, very similar.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of the land? Notice small, moderate, to large?
I'm, I'm not aware that there's a lot of traffic associated with some of these things.
With this mall?
Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
When you look at the intensity of use, you gotta look at what uses are allowed there. Okay, so you have to look at it.
Official office building.
Everything that the chairman just brought up, that's the, that's the intensity that could go there. Even though it's not there right now, that's what you're looking at, so you're comparing it to that, not, not that it's just vacant land.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Know or small impact, moderate to large impact?
I would say large. I would go a large.
I guess I would say that it's small.
Will the proposed action have an impact?
No, the public hearing is closed, please.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area, CKA?
We don't have any.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic, or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
I would say large. I would say small. The traffic in and out, it hasn't been before.
Well, you have to compare it to, then you have to put up a business office, or a Stewart's there, but Stewart's would have more traffic to me. I would say small. I would say small, compared to what could go there.
Correct, I said, you can't, you can't, when you make your comparisons, you can't compare that being a vacant land. It's not zoned as residential, it's zoned as maybe a commercial. So you gotta, you gotta pretend that, hey, I can put a Stewart's there, how much traffic is with Stewart's? If I put this there because it's not allowed, is it less or more traffic? That's what you, I tell you, you can't, even though...
We're talking about storage units rather than, uh, Stewart's or whatever. Because we're talking about storage units right now, that's why I said greater.
But I'm explaining that that is not zoned R2, it's zoned neighborhood commercial. That's what you gotta compare it to.
But still, we're talking about storage units, not talking about Stewart's or McDonald's, I don't think, Mr. Lefebvre.
Okay, so the question is, traffic, so much to Rabidou, do you feel those storage units are gonna give quite a bit more traffic than a Stewart's? If so, that's your answer.
I'm saying that it would cause more traffic than what is there now, because we're dealing with storage units.
Right, but that, that's not the analysis, the analysis is this is zoned neighborhood commercial, so you've gotta determine, how, if everything in neighborhood commercial with the requested variance having no or small impact, to, to not to what's there now, which is vacant land, with not a single car moving in or off all day. If there was a Stewart's there now, which would be allowed, he's coming in saying, "I want to put up storage units." With the storage units versus the Stewart's, what would have a bigger impact on traffic? That's the, that's the weighing question you're supposed to make right now, based on this question.
And we say Stewart's.
You may still have the same answer, I just want to make sure you understand exactly what the, what the weighing balance is. We say Stewart's, it could be a church, it could be, it could be a hospital, so you both say all those things, and then say, if worst case scenario, all those to this variance, what would be the impact? That's what, that's what this form tells you you have to do.
Because remember, once you say large, moderate to large, you didn't have to explain it on the back of the form, why you picked moderate to large. That can't be in contradiction to what's allowed.
Right. So let's just, so, let's just do a show of hands. Know or small impact, moderate to large, so know or small impact, first.
Small, a small impact?
Know or small is the same, moderate to large is the same. So show of hands for know or small impact. Show of hands for moderate to large impact. We'll go with know or small impact. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
Nothing's going to be powered up, right?
We have security lights, and we're looking at security, possibly doing solar, I don't know if that's all dependent on power.
The small.
Can we agree with that?
Yes.
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 Will the proposed action affect existing public-private water supply and public-private wastewater treatment utilities? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of a port of historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will the proposed action create, excuse me, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? Like they've all been answered, know or small.
So we would have a motion to clear up negative declaration for the secret.
Public motion.
Show of hands, and a roll call of votes. Yes.
No.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Patrick DeHun.
Yes.
For a use variance, the part of the criteria is as follows. It cannot realize a reasonable return substantial, as shown by complete financial evidence. Which is the sticking point for any type of use variance, basically. Right now, your business is surviving there, or is that surviving?
We'll have a lot of business.
Well, I realize that, I mean, your actual investment is like five, ten years from now, when the trees actually mature and can actually...
That's the idea.
So what you're showing here is that you basically have about all over ten thousand dollars worth of annual expenses, and your actual return for your agriculture, that you've been there, you've planted corn, is that it?
Yes.
So that's about six hundred dollars a year annual from that, so obviously it's not a good situation. The eligibility is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood, which is another sticking point, because it is a not a commercial area that is attached to... non-commercial area that is attached directly to our two area. So sever off of that. So to the actual zoning, it's not a big major item because it is a non-commercial area, but the neighborhood is actually all residential. You have any clause in that, Patrick?
Well, my thought is, you've got Joey's here, I'm sure he's gonna do something with the property. Could be a Stewart's we've all been talking about, or could be even a five or six story building for professional use. And you wouldn't even have to come here. So that's a way I'm not.
That's a valid point. And the request of variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And then that's the balancing point again where, I mean, these three units compared to a five-story professional building being put up there, which would definitely impact that area more so than the, the three storage buildings. And the last one is the alleged hardship has not been self-created. And if it's been self-created, then that automatically deters the whole thing. Anybody from people here, board members? So the motion would be either to grant the use variance according to the information that we got tonight, or to deny the use variance.
You want to grant it?
Okay, we have a motion for Roger to, to grant the variance. We have second.
I'll second.
Patrick seconded it. We're gonna have a show of hands on that. And a vote. Call a vote.
Andrew Yale.
Yes.
Chairman Reverend.
Yes.
Roger Bligh.
Yes.
Patrick E. Hahn.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last motion is.
I'd make a motion soon. That's the direction.
My second up here.
Well, we've been told in a statement that, that it's gonna be gated in time.
Can we give us a draft now so?
Yes.
But maybe I should have.
That's what I was trying to say. If it's too late after that, make a change.
I'll get forward here.
We can no longer say, we need to rezone that. Can't do that. It's been done. The damage has been done. They say that there's no impact. The man self-created his own problem. He planted only corn. He doesn't get anything for corn. Everybody knows that. He created his own problem. He created it. He purchased land that he thought he could get rich on.
The tree's been planted there for five years and ain't any bigger than it was when you planted it.
Well, it's, it's gonna take a while to grow, but. Give them an inch and it's just gonna, it's cheap, it's thin.
Well, Matthew, thank you for attending. Thank you guys.
Get in the wood, get in the wood, don't.
I gotta get the, I gotta. I know I complained about that, but you know, every year.
I want, I was about to say, okay, I'm a DA of City Hall. If you wanna know the most burglarized place in the city of Plattsburgh, it's Kenny Drive. We get three a week. You wanna put a K D S A P, you guys? Then the crime comes in. It's unbelievable how much crime is in that. The storage units freak me out because of that scene of the silence of the lamps. That's it. I would never go. One couldn't pay it off, but.
Yeah.
No worse than Kenny Drive and that shit. We get two money dents at the same time.